Sounds like it's, uh...
Yeah.
We need to...
Call the Wilmer City Council meeting for Monday, April 4th to order a roll call.
Mayor Calvin.
Here.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Here.
Osmus.
Here.
Butterfield.
Here.
O'Brien.
Here.
Ask.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Plowman.
Here.
Nelson.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
This conference will now be recorded.
The pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic whose independence, one nation, under God, indivisible, with original justice for all. Move to approve. Should I? Move slow on that.
Yeah, I was.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda as it's been presented?
Yes.
We do have one addition that staff is requesting us to consider. It's a memorandum of understanding between the labor union, and it's amending the pay for our wastewater superintendent and our deputy fire chief. So I'd like to add that. Council is amicable to that. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to accept the amended budget.
So move.
Agenda.
Agenda.
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
That proposed agenda is approved. Ms. Valiant, did this get sent to Councilmember Osmus?
Yes.
Okay, next we have consent items, and with that, I'll go to Ms. Thompson, our city clerk.
Excuse me. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, may I ask the council on tonight's consent agenda? We have for council's approval, the city council minutes of March 21st, Wilmer Municipal Utilities Commission minutes of March 28th, Planning Commission minutes of February 16th, Park and Recreation Board minutes of February 16th, council payable report for March 17th through the 30th, a resolution for consideration of airport grant pass-through agreement with MINDOT, and for council's acceptance, the Central Community Transit Operations Board minutes of December 21st, 2021.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second to approve the consent items. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we'll have a memorandum of understanding between two of our employees within a bargaining group. Ms. Valiant?
Yes, this understand memorandum of understanding is to correct the 2022 starting wages for the wastewater treatment superintendent and the depart deputy fire chief.
Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in second at discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have open forum, and we have Mr. David Moody, who was asked to address the council. Mr. Moody, please state your name, and we already have that you do not reside within the city, so just go ahead and state your name and then present what you want. Staff will keep a timer for me, so I know when your three minutes are up. You have three minutes to present, and then after that, if you're still presenting, I'll ask you to stop. You'll just hear a little buzzer, so if you're in the middle of a sentence or a thought, continue that. And I don't think you've presented in open forum before, so just kind of want to go through the rules, so go ahead.
Good, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, city council members. I am a member of the Wilmer Nordic Ski Club. It has been in operation since I incorporated it in 2002, which is 20 years. And in that time, we have used the facilities across the road here, adjacent to the golf course and at the golf course, for recreational winter skiing, cross-country skiing. And that area is also widely used by hikers and also by hunters during the hunting season. We have some of the cross-country ski team with us today, along with their coach, Brad Haugen. And we also have Phil Hoffer with us today, who was one of the original members with me who used that facility. The, if you've been, if you've ever been over there, you'll see that there's a cemetery over there as well, and that is a cemetery that was created by the state hospital. The area is beautiful, it has woods, it's quite picturesque, there's also some farmland. And this land is now being sold by the state of Minnesota, MINDOT, and we would like the city council to approve a letter of inquiry and interest to the Minnesota Department of Transportation to determine if that land can be transferred from the city to the state. We've talked to Representative Baker, who's also interested in this, and we would like to generate some enthusiasm. As you enter the city, this is one of the prettiest, this is the prettiest entrance to the city by far. And that whole area that, that fronts the, the entrance to the city on 2371 is a, is a perfect site to keep as a natural area. And if you remember, the sign to the city is right adjacent that property. That's, that's the land we're talking about, that runs from 90 all the way to the, this, the county road that moves up the golf course, golf course road. The land isn't, that's not included is the cemetery and access to it. So we're talking about just that land, that strip of land along the, along the, along the road. It hasn't been developed before because it's really not really well-developable, but it's a perfect site for recreation and is, has a beautiful entrance to Wilmer.
Thank you for your comments. Maybe I'll just ask staff, I believe we're aware of this, correct?
Correct.
And so I think, I think this will be coming to the council fairly quickly, so thank you for your inquiry.
Thank you.
Next, we have 2022 Improvement Project bids and as-bid budgets. Our interim, actually, our consulting engineer, Mr. Vogi.
Good evening, Mayor, council. Number of items in your packet here this evening as it relates to the reconstruction projects that were recently bid and advertised, we received bids back for those. There are four of them, and I'll go through them for you this evening. Ultimately, the, the first project that I wanted to call your attention to is for the Sixth Street Southwest Improvements Project. We did receive bids on that project. The total bid amount that we did receive was $2,194,554, below the engineers', and that was below the engineers' estimate. I have included in your packet all the resolutions and the as-bid budgets for the projects. The bid, or the bid tabulations were included in the packet. I can certainly run through them individually or generally summarize them. And ultimately, the budgets in your packets have identified the contingencies, which is customary as part of the as-bid budget, and the total project cost with all of the four reconstruction projects that were, that were taken for bid is $7,324,253. As I mentioned, there are resolutions for each of the packet, or for each of the projects in the packet. Long story short is bids came in well for these projects. I've spoken with the contractors, they're excited to get going, and I believe that pending council authorization to award these projects this evening, that should put the city in a good position to complete projects before the fall weather sets in, which was identified as a goal of the council. So with that, I'm going to pause and answer any questions that council might have.
Okay, council, any questions? Motion? Looking for a motion to approve project number 2201A, which is the reconstruction of Sixth Street Southwest from 19th Avenue to Wilmer Avenue.
So move.
Second. Motion made and seconded, the award would go to Voss Plumbing and Heating. Discussion. On the overall, Mr. Vogi, on the overall projects, we came, and I did some rough math, but I didn't write it down, I left it at home, a little over $400,000 under what the engineers' estimate was?
Yes, that's correct.
487.
487?
Mm-hmm.
And do you think the reason why these came in lower is because how quickly we were able to get these out? Because I know when the county opened their bids, they actually came in higher than engineers' estimates.
No, and that's a great question. So based on my conversations with a lot of the contractors, a couple factors came into play. One was getting them out early, and, and as we talked previously, we'll continue to move forward with discussing next year's projects coming up here very shortly. So that was one component. The second one, I think, is, is ultimately the schedule and some of the flexibility in the, in the scheduling. And ultimately, I think council's actions of pursuing additional reconstruction projects at one time really generated a lot of interest. You'll notice that based on the number of bidders that we received on each project. And secondly, or the third thing, I guess I would point out, is the materials, some flexibility in the materials being used for the improvements, because right now, there's a, there's a huge supply chain issue as it relates to piping, manholes, hydrants, valves, all of that. So I would say those are probably the three primary reasons.
Perfect, okay, great. Okay, so we have a motion that's been made and seconded to award the contract with Voss Plumbing and Heating, the amount of $2,197,554.35. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we need to adopt the as-bid budget.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the as-bid budget with, for the contract with Voss Plumbing and Heating. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we're looking at project number 2201B, Reconstruction of Charlotte Street Southeast from Johanna Avenue to Becker Avenue. The low bidder on that is Dunick Construction, the amount of $1,383,205, $205.29. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve a contract with Dunick Incorporated for those streets. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. We also need to adopt an as-bid budget for the same project.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to adopt the as-bid budget. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next, we have project number 2201C, Reconstruction of the Industrial Drive Southwest Service Road. That award low bid was Voss Plumbing and Heating, in the amount of $1,169,645.85. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. We need to adopt an as-bid budget for that project as well.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is project number 2201D, Reconstruction of 13th Street Southwest from Litchfield Avenue to Trot Avenue, Litchfield Avenue Southwest from 13th Street to 11th Street. The low bid is Dunick Incorporated, for in the amount of $1,197,192.00. Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. That completes our reconstruct projects, and now we'll go on to consideration of plans and specs and authorize.
Mr. Mayor, we have to adopt the as-bid budget.
Adopt the as-bid budget. Apologize.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Next is consideration of plans and specs and authorized advertisement for bids for the Epitopic Sanitary Sewer and Water, Water Main Extension Project. Mr. Vogi.
All right, good evening, Mayor, council. In your packet this evening is a request to authorize advertisement for the Epitopic Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension Project. As you recall, there was a grant received for the sanitary portion of the work and some additional funding from the company as it relates to the water piece. So those plans and specs have been prepared, and it is our recommendation that council adopt the resolution authorizing advertisement for bids to be received May 4th, 2022.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to authorize bids for opening May 4th, 2022, for the Epitopic, Epitopic Sanitary Sewer and Water Main Extension. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of plans and specs and authorized advertisement for bids for the 2022 Street Overlay and Parking Lot Projects. Mr. Vogi, again.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The item before you is related to the Mill and Overlay projects as well as the parking lot improvements projects. This is the second component of the 2022 improvements with the Mill and Overlay projects following the projects that you just awarded for the reconstruction. The Mill and Overlay includes 19th and Lakeland as well as First Street or Business 71. In addition, the parking lots identified are the fire station, both north and south, Block 41, and then Sperryville. So these plans and specifications have been prepared, and we're seeking authorization through a resolution to advertise those projects for bids to be received April 27th.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve consideration of plans and specs, authorized advertisement for bids for the 2022 Street Overlay and Parking Lot Projects, as identified by our consulting engineer. Discussion. Roll call.
Councilmember O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Resolution passes. Next, Airport Apron Expansion Project. Again, Mr. Vogi, our consulting engineer, it looks like a tag team effort going to happen here, so I've got you to call on according to my notes, so.
Sure, no problem.
I don't know if you're going to introduce it or if you're going to...
Eric, you're for support, so. Mayor, council, on March 30th, we received four bids for the Apron Expansion Project, and the information related to the bids received is there in your packet, but the low bid was received from Kramer Excavating in the amount of $1,031,809.60. And there is a resolution in your packet this evening for awarding that project, and then I'll, I'll pause on that one, and then there's a second action item in your packets as well.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve bid award of a contract to Kramer Excavating for the Apron Airport Expansion Project. Discussion from council. Roll call.
Councilmember Ask.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of an agreement with the City Stock Center for repayment of airport entitlement funds.
Good evening, Mayor, council. The second item in your packet this evening is, just as the mayor stated, it's the repayment of entitlement funds to the City of Stock Center. This agreement, it would essentially authorize the city to acquire FAA entitlement funds from the City of Stock Center that they will not be using and apply them toward the project here in Wilmer annually. The City of Wilmer receives FAA entitlement funds, and this would allow the project to be fully funded. Simply, the city would then return those funds over prior to May 15th, 2024, out of the annual allocation that the city receives. So that's the purpose of the agreement.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion from council. Council more comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick question. How, how the area is selected, is that something that the city is involved in, or the engineering staff, or is that a selection made by MINDOT Aviation or the FAA?
Who you trade with?
Right, right, for sock, that, the fact that it is sock center.
That ultimately is a result of the fact that our firm represents sock center and is aware of their CIP. They don't have any projects on the, on the docket for those two years, and our aviation staff contacted them, and they're likely organization to trade with, so.
So because of inside knowledge or knowledge that we have within our working agreements, that's how it gets put together like that?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Another benefit of a consulting engineer, I think, is what you're pointing out?
Definitely, yep.
And that did come in a tad bit over?
Yes, it was approximately 4% over the engineers' estimate.
Additional comments or questions from council? Roll call.
Councilmember Davis.
Aye.
Plowman.
Aye.
Nelson.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
Osmus.
Aye.
Butterfield.
Aye.
O'Brien.
Aye.
Ask.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes. Next, we have consideration of an agreement with the City of Stock Center for repayment of airport entitlement funds.
That's the one you just passed.
Next, we have...
Nope.
They walked out, I guess, I guess there must not be a sock, another sock center, so. The last one, I forgot one, this one I wanted to do it twice, so.
We could try a sock center and see what happens.
Yeah, there you go. Next, we have consideration of an agreement with Chamberlain Oil Company for Public Works Diesel Exhaust Fluid, Oil and Waste Oil Storage Dispensing System Project with the City of Stock Center.
It's a mouthful. Good evening, Mayor and council. Before you have an agreement with Chamberlain Oil to install a waste oil dispensing system, oil dispensing system slash DEF, if you don't know what DEF is, that's diesel exhaust fluid that we are now, every time we get a new unit, we're using diesel exhaust fluids, we're up to six, seven units, we start to burn quite a bit of that, that we didn't before, we're just doing it in gallon containers for a while, and then it's 55 gallon drums. So this is a dispensing system for that, as well as our oil distribution. When we service vehicles, that is all stored in homemade oil containers that were built by the mechanic three generations ago, and that stuff, none of that stuff complies with today's standards as far as safety and OSHA, and so this is just to bring that whole system up to date. Any questions?
Council, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to approve the request from our Public Works Department. Discussion or questions for Gary? Motion made and seconded.
When you say three generations ago, was that Ed?
Ed.
Okay.
There's still some Ed stuff around and that's one of the last ones. We have a trailer that he also built and it said, that serial number is ED77. He built it 1977.
Additional questions or comments? Again, a long time, longstanding Public Works employee who did a lot of great things and really very innovative and things that were done in Wilmer that a lot of people copied and probably even a people, few people made patents off of what Ed had actually done.
I know I've been to the League of Minnesota Cities, you know, they have those lost control events. And they had a couple of our sander carts and winning carts that Ed had designed and built. And they use them as a prototype for other cities to copy, so. And the new guys that we have, I'll be honest with you, are really good too, so we're keep moving along.
Pretty fortunate. So motion made and seconded and discussion has happened, so go ahead for roll call.
Councilmember Plowman?
Aye.
Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That resolution passes as well. Thank you, Gary. Next is consideration of agreement with Vibrant Broadband for the Industrial Park Fiber Buildout. Mr. Walker, our public, our planning and development director.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, so it starts, I think probably about like two, three months ago at this point, I was kinda digging around, I think talking to local internet companies and internet providers in town to kinda see if they had any intentions to build out fiber to the home in Wilmer. And talked to some companies around town, talked to some of the bigger companies who had a presence in Wilmer to kinda see what their intentions are, if they had any intentions of ever building out and like what their timeline was. Just because I kinda see this as something that will be foundational to improving and maintaining the quality of life for residents in the City of Wilmer. And I think throughout multiple conversations, some people said it just wasn't feasible at all. They just didn't have any intentions to do it or that they had an existing footprint, but it was not open to residents and it was something that was only for businesses. And I kinda got, I kinda came to the conclusion, just kinda looking around a little more, this was something of an opportunity that we'd probably have to expedite and maybe be a catalyst of in some regard. And so that kinda led me to talking with Mieh Co-op, which is also Vibrant, that provides fiber to the home, fiber to the home broadband service. And I guess, I guess like, like the car tonight is about building out fiber in the industrial park, but using that as a catalyst to start phase residential fiber to the home build out as soon as next year possibly. And I guess tonight I'm seeking the preliminary approval of, just kinda, before we sink more staff time into this, to consider drafting up a contract from the LOI and I think looking at the nitty gritty details of the questions of ownership and then like revenue sharing and all those things. I think before we move forward to that stage, I think just kinda seeking the preliminary approval of council that this is something that you want staff to look into.
Council, what are your wishes on this project?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve discussion around a consideration of an agreement with Vibrant Broadband for the Industrial Park Fiber Buildout and letter of intent is what you said.
Yes, so, so yeah, so I guess the letter of intent is really just kinda like a 10,000 foot view, like a very rough kinda overview, I'd say draft outline of what the agreement would be. I think like the nitty gritty details that I think we need to kinda, I think, get more of a handle on is something that staff will be looking to over the coming weeks. And then before we have like a final contract that needs to be approved. But this is before we sink staff into, before we sink staff time into figuring out what those details would be and those nuances in the agreement.
Okay. Additional comments from council? Councilmember Vagerly?
So you'll be working out a franchise fee with them or there'll be a franchise fee for the provider of the internet service when they hook up to a property?
And so that's, that's one of the details that will, that will get hammered out, like as far as, cause I think broadband operates a little differently than some of the other, other utilities. And so that's one of the things that we'll get an answer on and get clarity about like what that fee needs to be and then how the structure of it, how, what the structure of it will be and who pays for what.
Do we have to have our franchise fee attorney involved with this that we use for charter or spectrum?
Yeah, I think, I think probably on the back end before like we get anything kinda hammered out, that's, that's what we'll do, I think, just to be safe.
Okay, thank you.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Plowman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm supportive of this and I, I made the motion because I think it's important that, it's an important step to take so that we can gather even more information, so that we can actually know what we're, the nitty gritty, the details down the road, just like you said before, we can take the next steps. I'm in favor of this also too, because after, you know, a number of years, the EDC has been working on various broadband projects, other entities within and around the state. And there's been a lot of conversations surrounding it. And I think it's, it's important to have that city level discussion, but then also to have the community discussion because in the past I've received a lot of questions. You know, we have internet, what do we need to go spending more money on internet for? And I think that's a, it's a good question, but I also think that this will help answer a lot of those questions through this process. And for myself, as a, as a consumer over the years, as I'm sure a lot of other residential consumers have felt, you feel as though you're kinda limited in your options and you kinda just watch the price of your service go up and up and up and not necessarily the quality of that service. But then also as a commercial user, you see a completely different, a different world and a different aspect and level of importance when it comes to the ability to tap into higher bandwidths and speeds, especially highlighted by the COVID pandemic the last few years and the draw on broadband. And my own personal experience is that in, in the commercial world and the business world where everything is more and more digital and digital communication is necessary for the transfer of information and specifically the timely transfer of information. It seems as though if, if a community wants to be on the front end or the forefront of a growing commercial and industrial community, then this would be a practical step in that direction. So thank you for, for diving into this and, and charging into it. I look forward to learning more as we move along here, so it's exciting.
Additional comments or questions? Councilmember O'Brien?
Am I reading this correctly? We're looking at putting 19 miles of fiber outside the city?
So that would be to bring it to Wilmer, it has to be connected, yeah.
So we're gonna pay for 80% of this installation in the county?
It's, it's more to bring it to Wilmer. I think, I think, I think that, that, that's kinda, that's kinda, just kinda where it is as far as like the connection that needs to be made, that's the, that's the one viable option. I think the other option was contingent upon a two-year hiatus of maybe we could do something else when it got closer, but that wouldn't be able to be started until at earliest 2024.
Have you heard of a municipality south of us that was looking at bringing fiber this way?
I know there are other projects that are contingent upon grants that have not been approved yet, it's like, but.
Who are you talking about? Councilmember O'Brien?
I just got a call before I came and they just, they didn't throw a name at me. They just said there's a municipality possibly and I should bring it up to see if, if Mr. Walker knew about it. So that's what I'm doing.
It's kind of hard to answer an ambiguous question.
So I know Prinsburg is involved with a project. I know they're, they're south of us, but yeah, there, there's this contingent upon a grant. I, I'm not sure if it's already in the works or if it's still contingent upon approval. But yeah, that's, that's the only one I know like south of us in the county that is moving towards some other things. I know there's plenty of grants kinda looking at like the northwest corner of the county. Some grants kinda on the east side of the county that are kinda working its way through. But there was nothing that was ever going to lead to fiber to the home in Wilmer.
Okay, all right, thanks.
Just, Councilmember Butterfield?
So what, McConney, believe you will tap into that line and expand it to the rural area too then?
That's one of the things as far as like the ownership side of like granting access and kinda how it's gonna go, that's one of the things that we need to kinda hammer out on the contract side. And so that is, that's, that's one of those details that, that we'll address kinda further once we get more into it.
Additional comments from council? We have Aaron Backman here, economic development for the City of Wilmer and Kenyatta County both. And maybe if we just ask Aaron a couple of questions, can you respond to Councilmember Plowman's first question? And then maybe the two questions that we had off to my right from Councilmember O'Brien and Councilmember Butterfield?
Sure, I would concur with Councilmember Plowman in terms of the EDC has made a major priority to extend broadband throughout the county. Certainly, we would be happy to see additional fiber to the City of Wilmer. It takes money, of course, to do that and providers. And we have worked actually with Vibrant. Connie Schmall has been interacting with them, particularly on the east side of the county. There's seven townships they've been working on and so forth. So we're certainly familiar with that. I would also say that in terms of Councilmember O'Brien's comment, yes, there's, there's been a project that the City of Prinsburg approved. They're not doing 80%, but then the county is putting in some, the city is putting in money, the county is putting in some of their ARPA dollars as well. In this case, the difference is that the funding sources, you're looking at the Industrial Park Fund. That's a significant commitment on the part of the city to utilize the $1 million. What I would just, what I would also like to say is that I think this is a smart move to consider getting broadband to the city so that we have options in terms of providers, number one. So I think it's a smart move on, on justice's watch here. The second thing I would add is that if we're gonna do it, let's do it right the first time. And I would argue that if we go two more miles to the west beyond, cause this is going to the third and fourth addition of the industrial park, if we go two more miles, we get to the airport. Right now, the airport does not have fiber. So if pilots come in, no fiber. If businesses are there, no fiber. We just, there was just a meeting today where they can't, they couldn't do Zoom because they don't have fiber. So I would encourage, maybe it's, it's, maybe it's an addendum, maybe it's, it's an add-on as part of the, the letter of intent to consider extending it to two miles over to the airport. I'm sure that Eric would be happy to see that occur. And right now, we've got some major projects, a significant hangar project in the works. I think this would bring the airport to the next level. Maybe it costs another $100,000. I, I would be supportive of putting another $100,000 or whatever into the, from the Industrial Park Fund. We're working on several projects now that could garner significant sums for the city in terms of land sales.
Councilmember Nelson?
Just a clarification, this is a letter of intent, so when you come back, we will be having a conversation about where the appropriate place is to take the funds from or?
No, no, no. So I, I guess my, my intentions would be to take it out of the Industrial Park Fund. I, I think that's kinda what's listed. I know there, there's some stipulations with ARPA. If we decided to use ARPA dollars, that we have to make sure that the contract and the stipulations of what we use it for complied with it. I think just right now, I, I, I talked to Steve, I got like a balanced budget of like what is in and available in the Industrial Park Fund. We have the money in the Industrial Park Fund for it. And I think if it was up to council to make the decision to decide for it comes, come from somewhere else, that's fine. But as of right now, the intention is to take it out of the Industrial Park Fund.
Can I ask one more? So with the comment that was made about going out to the airport, are there some changes in, in who would benefit that? And then if I remember correctly from your conversation, is it already in Atwater? I mean, are we talking about, they are proposing?
Yes, yeah, so it's on the east side of Atwater. And so this option would be bringing it from the east side of Atwater into the industrial park. And then I guess like with the addition of the airport, that's something that could probably be negotiated. And we see like what that additional cost would be. And I guess that would be provided for, but yeah, I guess we could include that in the negotiations.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions? I just wanna make a couple of comments and I'll come back over to you, Attorney Scott. As we all know, the plan, how it was being developed by the county was gonna leave Wilmer in a deficit. And Wilmer would have had worse internet than while the buildup was gonna happen within the rest of the county. And so we knew that going into it and I've spoken numerous times in support of the county plan at a statewide level and also at a local level at different conversations. This to me is really exciting. And the reason it's exciting is it will put us at the same level as what the rest of the county is getting built out to. You know, you talk about the business side, business has some opportunities that residential doesn't currently. Residential is wayfully under what it needs to actually function. I know my internet, even just to run YouTube TV, goes out regularly, almost every night it goes out simply because there's not enough bandwidth to support it on the local provider. And so I'm currently trying out another provider to see if it's any better. It appears to be a little bit better, but I still have times when I lose the service. So I think that this is a very good, Mr. Walker, I really commend you for your leadership and jumping out of the box and saying, let's look at this and see if there's something we can do. But I also wanna thank the folks from Vibrant to even, you know, look at it and say, okay, you know, maybe we can make something happen. And it certainly would be nice to do that. So, so that's really encouraging to see that. And I think this is a huge step forward for Wilmer. I think this is bringing Wilmer in leveling the playing field, if you will. You know, because I, I had a lot of businesses talking to me and telling me, you know, you know, it's gonna be an advantage to me now to move outside of Wilmer because the internet is gonna be better outside of Wilmer than it is in Wilmer. And so this will kinda level that playing field. So thank you for your tenacity. I know your plate has really been full. I know you're working on a lot of stuff. You know, the deal with bringing on the new rental inspector, that was a big piece that the council's been talking about for years. And you're spearheading that, plus you're spearheading this, plus a lot of economic development things you're doing. So you're doing a lot of heavy lifting, so thank you very much. So with that, I'll go to Attorney Scott.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Just, I wanted to make one point of clarification before the council votes on this, which is you did have a relatively detailed letter of intent in your packet. And certainly Planning Director Walker can step in if I'm stating this wrong. But I believe the request of the council tonight is not to approve that specific letter of intent because I think a lot of the terms in that letter require further discussion with the company. But rather to give direction to staff that the council is interested in this project and the council should continue negotiations with the company with the aim of bringing back a, an actual definitive contract for the council to review and approve at a subsequent meeting.
Yeah, my understanding is this was just simply giving us the, giving staff the go-ahead from council that, so he's not walking off the cliff. It's kind of the impression that I had.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, there's no, there's no funding sources identified. There's, there's no agreements. We're not approving an agreement. It's just so you can continue the conversations to bring back a letter of intent that we would go through more thoroughly.
Yeah, letter of intent contract, yeah.
That's council's understanding as well? Okay, so this is a consideration of, to allow staff to continue working. And so I'm gonna take that agreement out. I'm gonna say consideration of, to allow staff to continue working with Vibrant Broadband for Industrial Park Fiber Buildout and working on a letter of intent to be supported by the council. Council understanding that that's what we're doing here? In the motion or in the second are okay with that? Does that change the content of what the motion was?
Mayor Council, I don't believe so. That was the recommendation presented by staff. Again, assuming that the mover and seconder agree with the motion as you repeated it, I think you're good to go.
Okay, so as, as the mayor stated then in, in your interpolation of that, that's, we're okay? I mean, that's how we want it at this point?
Yes.
Okay, then I'm all right with it.
I don't think that's what's written here. That's why I clarified it. Seconder as well?
Correct.
Motion and seconder are both in agreement with the revised motion. And that would be a simple motion then? We would not need a roll call because we're not taking definitive action?
That's correct, Mayor, except that you do have a remote participant, so you should do the vote by roll call anyway.
Thank you. Roll call.
Councilmember Nelson?
Aye.
Vagerly?
Aye.
Osmus?
Aye.
Butterfield?
Aye.
O'Brien?
Aye.
Osk?
Aye.
Davis?
Aye.
Plowman?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion passes, so no longer a resolution, it'll now be a motion. Staff make note of that?
Got it.
Okay, next we have community pride announcements, council. Any community pride announcements that you have? Councilmember Butterfield?
Yeah, again, Peps is throwing on a wrestling match this Saturday. Doors open at 6, starts at 7 at the city auditorium. It's free to the public.
Anything else from the council? Okay, with that, council is gonna go into closed session. If you are included in the closed session, I think you probably know that you're included. At this point, the agenda item is to close the meeting pursuant to Minnesota State Statute 13D.05, sub 3C, to develop or consider offers or counter offers for the sale of city-owned real property. This agenda item is to, this agenda item is to consider or consider offers or counter offers for the sale of city-owned real property in or near the city's industrial park identified by the following parcel numbers. 95, 7, 95, 917, 5620, 5630, 5600, 5551, 5550, 5511, 5510. The legal basis for closing the meeting is this portion of the properly noticed regular meeting of the city council will be closed pursuant to Minnesota Statute Section 13D.05, sub 3C. At this point, I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
So move.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the meeting. The meeting is closed.